Good morning and welcome to Pittsburgh City Council's regular meeting for Tuesday, January 19th. I have one meeting announcement for the beginning of the meeting. Council will continue to meet virtually until further notice. All meetings will be live streamed by the City channel, Pittsburgh YouTube channel. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Reverend Burgess.
Here.
Councilman Coghill.
Here.
Mrs. Gross. Mr. Kraus.
Here.
Mr. Lavelle.
Here.
Mr. O'Connor.
Here.
Mrs. Strasburger.
Here.
Mr. Wilson.
Here.
Council President Kelsmith.
Here.
Eight members present.
Thank you. As we join together from our remote locations, please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance and remain for a moment of silence. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And I apologize, I just would like to say, could we please have a moment of silence for our budget director's mother who passed away from COVID this week? So can we please have another moment of silence? Thank you. And our next order of business is proclamations. We have one to be read into the record, Madam Clerk. I don't know who's presenting it. It doesn't say.
Yes, I'm riding solo, like Kim is in the hospital. So I'm... One second.
No, take your time.
Okay.
I don't believe there are any procs today.
Yeah, I don't see any procs.
Okay, it says here, one read into the record. Okay, all right. Thank you.
Nope, don't have any.
Okay, thank you. So then our next order of business is public comment. Do we have any public comments, Madam Clerk? Do you know?
We do have two, but David just informed me that neither of them are in the waiting room.
Okay. So I'll just read my little spiel here in case they get on while I read.
Okay.
I would like to remind everyone that the rules of council state that comments are limited to matters of concern, official action, or deliberations which are or may be before city council. Profanity is not permitted. And if there's any registered speakers on, is there anyone on yet? No?
No, the first name was Charlotte. And she's not here.
Can we just check?
Yep, I'm gonna check, let's see.
I just want to make sure.
Nope.
I mean, we're all looking at so many different screens. Okay, do we have a second speaker?
The second speaker was Shaman. Humon.
I don't see her either. Okay. Do you see her?
No.
Okay. Okay. So there being no registered speakers on the line, we move on to our next order of business, which is presentation of papers. And we'll begin with Councilman Reverend Ricky Burgess, Councilman Burgess.
Good morning.
Good morning, Councilman.
Councilman Reverend Burgess presents Bill number 1059, Resolution Authorizing the Directive of the Department of Parks and Recreation and the Directive of the Department of Public Safety and Directive of the Office of Management and Budget to enter into agreements in individual amounts of $10,000 or less with performers, instructors, artists, referees, and persons with specialized skills in connection with the department's recreational and instructional programs and special event services. Bill number 1060, Resolution Authorizing the Department of Parks and Recreation to enter into a community partner access agreement with the Josh Gibson Foundation and no cost for the use of the Amon Community Center in order to provide recreational and community-focused activities. Bill number 1061, Resolution Authorizing the Department of Parks and Recreation to enter into a community partner access agreement with the Macedonia Church of Pittsburgh and no cost or use of the Amon Community Center in order to provide recreational and community-focused activities. Bill number 1062, Resolution Authorizing the Department of Parks and Recreation to enter into a community partner access agreement with Ozeman, Inc., at no cost for the use of the Community Center in order to provide recreational and community-focused activities. Bill number 1063, Resolution Authorizing the Department of Parks and Recreation to enter into a community partner access agreement with the Hazelwood Youth Mentorship and Athletic Association at no cost for the use of the Birdwin Community Center in order to provide recreational and community-focused activities. Bill number 1064, Resolution Providing for an Agreement Lease and/or License Agreement for the Use of Certain Properties for Senior Facilities for the Provision of Centered Services to Seniors in an Amount Not to Exceed $15,200 Chargeable to and Payable from the Seniors' Community Trust Fund in the Department of Parks and Recreation. Bill number 1065, Resolution Authorizing the Department of Parks and Recreation to enter into a community partner access agreement with the Calabria's Club at no cost for the use of the Mount Washington HAL Center in order to provide recreational and community-focused activities. Bill number 1066, Resolution Authorizing the Department of Parks and Recreation to enter into a community partner access agreement with Voices Against Violence and no cost for use of the McKinley Community Center in order to provide recreational and community-focused activities. Bill number 1067, Resolution Authorizing the Department of Parks and Recreation to enter into a community partner access agreement with the Mount Washington Community Center and no cost for use at the Ram Community Center in order to provide recreational and community-focused activities. Bill number 1068, Resolution Authorizing the Department of Parks and Recreation to enter into a community partner access agreement with the Pittsburgh Contingency, Inc., at no cost for the use of the Ram Community Center in order to provide recreational and community-focused activities. Bill number 1087, Ordinance Supplement in the Pittsburgh Code of Ordinances Title I, Administrative Article III Organizations, Chapter 116, Department of Public Safety, to add a new subsection 116.07.17, prohibition and execution of no-knock warrants by requiring all city police officers when executed any warrant to physically knock and announce the presence of police before entering a premises.
Madam President.
Yes.
Could I ask your indulgence? Could I please offer up a motion to waive the rules on 1066, which enters into an agreement between the city and Voices Against Violence, to use McKinley rec? That one's a no-brainer. We could have that on the agenda tomorrow. So, motion to waive the rules in 1066 so that it may appear on tomorrow's standing committee agenda?
Motion for a second? Any discussion? Any discussion? Well, I'd just like to say, I'd like to have a discussion about all these uses of all the centers because we seem to have some inconsistency. So I'd like to make sure that we're consistent in what we're doing.
Sure.
So I'm looking forward to the discussion, but all in favor?
Aye. Thank you. And then one more thing, may I please be added as a sponsor to 1087, the requirement for no knocking warrants, please? Thank you. Thanks.
Okay, thank you. And our next committee is Councilman Coghill, Chair of Public Works.
I think we have an amendment on Bill number 1087, Reverend Burgess.
Sorry, I apologize.
Do we? We do. No. 77 not, Madam Clerk. I have an amendment.
Amendment for the Intergovernmental Affairs.
Yes.
Committee. Thank you, Madam Clerk.
Further down, further down, further down.
Yeah, I was trying to say, I don't think.
Okay.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
Okay, Councilman Coghill, Chair of Public Works.
Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Councilman.
Councilman Coghill presents Bill number 1069, Resolution Granting Unto Sean Winnie Their Successors and Assigns the Privilege and License to Construct, Maintain, and Use of Their Own Cost and Expense in Existing Set of Woodsteps and a Retining Wall at 705 Hazelwood Avenue in the 15th Ward, 5th Council District. Bill number 1070, Resolution Granting Unto Bloomfield Garfield Corporation Their Successors and Assigns the Privilege and License to Construct, Maintain, and Use of Their Own Cost and Expense, a Set of New Concrete Stairs and Landing and a New Vertical Platform Lift, 113 North Pacific Avenue in the 10th Ward, 9th Council District. Bill number 1071, Resolution Granting Unto Pittsburgh Student Housing LLC Their Successors and Assigns the Privilege and License to Construct, Maintain, and Use of Their Own Cost and Expense, a Projecting Sign at 1035th Avenue in the 1st Ward, 6th Council District. Bill number 1072, Resolution Granting Unto Stephen Richard Jr. Their Successors and Assigns the Privilege and License to Construct, Maintain, and Use of Their Own Cost and Expense to Install a New Projecting Sign at 2025 East Carson Street in the 17th Ward, 3rd Council District. Bill number 1073, Resolution Granting Unto Cow Law Holding LLC Their Successors and Assigns the Privilege and License to Construct, Maintain, and Use of Their Own Cost and Expense to Install Two New Projecting Signs at 2026 East Carson Street in the 17th Ward, 3rd Council District. Bill number 1074, Resolution, Amending Resolution 849 Providing for the Leading or Enduring the Calendar Year 2018, 2019, and 2020 Contracts and for the Use of Existing Contracts for Professional Services, including Planning, Architectural Engineering, and Real Estate Services, as well as Construction, Administration, Management, and Inspection Services related to the Assessment, Design, Construction, and Maintenance of the City's Capital Assets, including Infrastructure, Buildings, and Land as needed by the various Departments of the City. Funding for these services are to come from the capital budget and the projects supported by the professional services to allow for continuation of services for ongoing projects previously assigned under the existing on-call contracts through December 31st, 2021. Bill number 1075, Resolution, Amending Resolution 97 of 2018, entitled Providing for Contracts or the Use of Existing Contracts and/or Agreements Providing for the Design, Repairs, Maintenance, Improvements, Emergencies, and/or the Purchase of Materials, Equipment, and Supplies in Connection with the McFerran Street Bridge Project and Providing for a Reimbursement Agreement with the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania Department of Transportation and Providing for Payment of Costs Not to Exceed $3,750,000 to Increase the Total Not to Exceed to $3,789,680.36 for Payment of Work Performed by Goalistic Construction. Bill number 1076, Resolution Vacating a Portion of 1st Avenue, a 30-foot Right-Away in the 1st Ward, 6th Council District of the City. Bill number 1077, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and Director of the Department of Public Works to Receive Grant Funding from the Allegany County Sanitary Authority's Green Revitalization of Our Waterways Program for Reitman Park Green Stormwater Infrastructure Phase, Providing for Expenditures Not to Exceed $352,47.92. Bill number 1078, Resolution, Amending Resolution Number 466, Authorizing the Mayor and Direct of the Department of Public Works to Enter into an Agreement between the City and Studio City for the Professional Landscape Architectural Services for Homewood Park Infrastructure Upgrades at a Cost Not to Exceed $1,630,014 by Increasing the Total Allocation from $54,855, Bill number 1079, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and Director of the Department of Public Works to Enter into an Agreement for the Use of Existing Agreements between the City and Karen Mensomoria for the Creation and Installation of Public Park in Southside Park at a Cost Not to Exceed $24,000.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. And can I ask whoever has their microphones on to please, in between the reading, please shut them off because there's a lot of background noise and I can't tell where it's coming from? So if everybody shuts off their mic and then turns it back on to vote, I know it's a pain, but it's disrupting the meeting. So thank you. And Councilman Coghill, you have a waiver for Rule 8 for Bill 1076?
Yes, motion to waive Rule 8 for 1076. Thank you.
Second. Any discussion on the waiver? Seeing no discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
The bill will, any opposed? The bill will appear on tomorrow's standing committee agenda. Councilwoman Gross, Chair of Intergovernmental Affairs.
Madam President.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Good morning.
Councilwoman Gross presents Bill number 1080, Resolution Providing for an Intergovernmental Corporation Agreement between the City and the Bureau of Wilkinsburg for the Collection of a Portion of the Bureau's Municipal Waste by the City for a Term of Five Years, commenced in January 1st, 2021, and ending December 31st, 2025. Bill number 1081, Resolution, Amending Resolution Number 279 of 2020, entitled Resolution Number 560 of 29, effective September 1st, 2019, entitled Resolution Providing for the Execution of a Corporation Agreement with the URA for the Purpose for the Performance of Certain Work in Connection with the 2019 through 2020 CDVG Program and Providing for the Payment of Costs Not to Exceed $4,558,960 by Including Additional Emergency Small Business Support Housing Stabilization Program and the URA Project Delivery Deliverables pertaining to Small Business Development, Tenant Assistant, Homeowner Assistant, and URA Personnel Raising the Total Costs Not to Exceed $11,905,823 by Including an Additional Economic Development and Housing HVAC Systems Line Item For an Amount Not to Exceed $250,000 and an Increase to the Tenant Assistant Housing Stabilization Program Line Item By an Amount Not to Exceed $2,000,000, raising the total cost thereof to the amount not to exceed $14,155,823.
Thank you. And is this the bill we have an amendment?
No.
No, not yet.
Not yet.
Committee, okay.
Final vote. There's an amendment for Councilman Burgess on his liquor license, I assume, and my committee and final vote.
Yes.
Thank you. And can we have Councilman Kraus, the Chair of Human Resources?
No new papers, Madam President.
Thank you, thank you, Councilman. Good morning.
Thank you. Good morning.
And Councilman Lavelle, Chair of Finance and Law.
Madam President.
Thank you. Good morning, Councilman.
Good morning.
Councilman Lavelle presents Bill number 1082, Resolution, Amending Resolution 55 of 2018, which authorizes the mayor to execute relevant agreements to receive grant funding to plan and implement the creation of financial empowerment centers within the city to enter into a professional services agreement with neighborhood allies for the continued operation of financial empower centers for the city, further authorizing agreements or contracts and expenditures not to exceed $10,000. Bill number 1083, Resolution, Further Amending Resolution Number 863 of 2018, effective January 1st, 2019, as amended, entitled Resolution Adopting and Approving in the 2019 Capital Budget and the 2019 CDVG Program and the 2019 through 2024 Capital Improvement Program by Reducing Small Man Street Reconstruction by $705,000, increasing step repair and replacement by $400,000, and increasing complete streets by $305,000. Bill number 1084, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and the City's Solicitor to Enter into an Agreement with LexisNexis for Subscription to an Online Research Tool at a Cost Not to Exceed $68,400 over a Term of Three Years.
Thank you. And Councilman O'Connor, Chair of Public Safety Services.
No new papers.
Thank you. And Councilwoman Strasburger, Chair of Innovation Performance and Asset Management.
No new papers, Madam President.
Thank you, thank you, Councilwoman. And Councilman Wilson, Chair of Land Use and Economic Development.
Madam President.
Thank you, Councilman.
Thank you.
Councilman Wilson presents Bill number 1085, Ordinance Amendment and Supplement in the Pittsburgh Code Title IX, Zoning Article VI, Development Standards, Chapter 914, Parking, Loading, and Access by Adding a New Subsection, 91409J, Parking Access for Single-Unit Attached Residential Uses to Require Rear or Side Access to Off-Street Parking Spaces for Single-Family Attached Dwellings.
And myself, Chair of Hearings, I have one communications for acting pay approval.
Council President Kelsmith presents Bill number 1086, Communication from David Hutchinson, Acting Director of the Office of Management and Budget, Submitting Acting Pay Approval on behalf of the Department of Public Works for Chris Hornstein per the Act and Pay Policy Revised in June 2018.
Do you have a motion to read, receive, and file?
So moved.
Second.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Motion's approved. And now we'll move on to unfinished businesses. Is there any unfinished business before council? And our next order of, seeing that, our next order of business is reports of committee for final action. Councilman Lavelle, Daniel Lavelle, Committee on Finance and Law.
Madam President.
Thank you, Councilman.
Councilman Lavelle presents Bill number 1055, Report of the Committee on Finance and Law for January 13th, 2021, with an affirmative recommendation. Bill number 1031, Resolution to Authorize and Direct the Incurring of Non-Electoral Debt, Issuing of a Series of General Obligation Bonds of the City in the Maximum Aggregate Principal Amount of $64,655,000. Bill number 1032, Resolution, Amending Resolution Number 507 of 2019, Vacating a Portion of Caldwell Street and Portions of Our Way in the 3rd Ward, 6th Council District of the City by Extending Exploration Date of the Payment from the Property Owners to the Treasury of the City from 150 days to 605 days from the Effective Date of the Resolution, August 1st, 2019.
You've heard the reading of the title of the bills. Is there any discussion on the bills? Seeing none, the bills are not ready for final action. All in favor, their passage will vote aye when the name is called. Those opposed will vote no. The clerk please call the roll.
Reverend Burgess. Mr. Coghill.
Aye.
Ms. Gross.
Aye.
Mr. Kraus.
Aye.
Mr. Lavelle.
Aye.
Aye.
Mr. O'Connor.
Aye.
Aye.
Mrs. Strasburger.
Aye.
Mr. Wilson.
Aye.
Mrs. Kelsmith, President.
Aye.
Aye.
Nine ayes, zero noes.
The bills haven't received the legally required number of votes. Thank you, Ashley. And now we have Councilman Coghill, Committee on Public Works.
Madam President.
Thank you, Councilman.
Sure.
Councilman Coghill presents Bill number 1056, Report of the Committee on Public Works for January 13th, 2021, with a Negative Recommendation. Bill number 955, Resolution Vacating a Portion of Wicklins Street, a 50-foot right-away laid out in the HM Vissel's Plan of Lots, recorded in Plan Book Volume 11, page 64, in the 10th Ward, 7th Council District.
Motion to approve or disapprove?
You don't make a motion. That's Wednesday.
We're just going to take a final vote and remember that this is a negative recommendation. So we're voting on the negative.
So there's one that's a negative recommendation, and if you're, if you want to uphold the negative recommendation, you vote aye, correct, Madam Clerk?
Yes.
Just want to make sure we're telling everybody the right thing. And, um... Okay, do we have to, is that just one bill I missed because I was texting one of the council members?
Yeah.
True.
Just one bill.
Okay. So on... You've heard the reading of the title of the bills. Is there any discussion on the bills? No discussion? And so... As we mentioned before, those in favor of the negative recommendation will vote aye when the bills, when their name is called. Those opposed will vote no. For the clerk, please call the roll.
Mr. Coghill.
Aye.
Ms. Gross.
Aye.
Mr. Kraus.
Aye.
Mr. Lavelle.
Aye.
Mr. O'Connor.
Aye.
Mrs. Strasburger.
Aye.
Mr. Wilson.
Aye.
Mrs. Kelsmith, President.
Aye.
Nine ayes, zero noes. Vote to support the negative recommendation.
The bill, oh, thank you. The, so the bill, having received, yeah, the bill having failed to receive the legally required number of votes is defeated. And so we'll move on to Councilman Bobby Wilson, Committee on Land Use and Economic Development.
Madam President.
Thank you, Councilman.
Thank you.
Councilman Wilson presents Bill number 1057, Report of the Committee on Land Use and Economic Development for January 13th, 2021, with an affirmative recommendation. Bill number 1049, Resolution to Grant the Legally Allowable Single Six-Month Extension to Inclusionary Housing Interim Planning Overlay District as per the Pittsburgh Code Title IX, zoning code article three, overlay zoning district, chapter 907, development overlay districts, time limit has been filed by the Department of City Planning, time limit, the expiry date of the district referenced in section 90702K, known as IPod 6 Lawrenceville, originally set by code for January 25th, 2021, and shall be extended by six months to July 25th, 2021.
You've heard the reading of the title of the bills. Is there any discussion on the bills?
Madam President, may I?
Madam, yeah, I'm sorry, Councilwoman Gross.
I think I would just like to reiterate my continued gratitude to council for supporting this pilot project in Lawrenceville. It was especially important to the people of Lawrenceville who had included affordability into their neighborhood plans, and this was the main way that they were able to add affordability back to their neighborhood because they had big sites for big, that big developers wanted to build on. And I look forward to kind of seeing how the conversation progresses, but I just wanted to say thank you to all of council and to the planning commission for the continued support.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Any other members? I'll just say, great job, Councilwoman Gross, Councilwoman Gross. And you've seen no further discussion. The bill's not ready for final action. All in favor, the passage will vote aye when the name is called. Those opposed will vote no. The clerk please call the roll.
Reverend Burgess. Mr. Coghill. Ms. Gross.
Aye.
Mr. Kraus.
Aye.
Aye.
Mr. Lavelle.
Aye.
Mr. O'Connor. Mrs. Strasburger.
Aye.
Mr. Wilson.
Aye.
Mrs. Kelsmith, President.
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero noes.
The bills haven't received the legally required number of votes. Okay, we have Councilmen's. Was that Councilman Wilson's committee? I apologize. No, that's Councilwoman Gross. Yeah, no. Sorry, I looked down and got confused. Councilwoman Deborah Gross, Committee on Intergovernmental Affairs.
Madam President.
Thank you, Councilwoman.
Councilwoman Gross presents Bill number ten fifty-eight, reported to the Committee on Intergovernmental Affairs for January thirteenth, twenty twenty-one with an affirmative recommendation. Bill number seven seventy-nine, Resolution Requesting the Approval of an Inter municipal Transfer of Liquor License from Alphoder Enterprises, Inc. to the applicant Cabaret LLC for the premises located at seventy-nine twenty-eight Frankstown Avenue, known as the Cabaret LLC pursuant to amended Pennsylvania Liquor Code. Bill number nine fifty-nine, Resolution Requesting the Approval of an Inter municipal Transfer of Liquor License from Armand and Araf to the applicant Burke Yomas LLC for the premises located at fifty-four forty Center Avenue, known as Pizza Palermo pursuant to amended Pennsylvania Liquor Code. Bill number ten thirty-four, Resolution Authorizing the City to Enter into a Corporation Agreement with the PWSA Authority to coordinate various stormwater and trail improvements in the four-mile run watershed.
You have heard the reading and the title of the bills. Is there any discussion on the bills? Yes, Councilman Burgess.
I have amendment, I have, it's written, I have an amendment for Bill two twenty oh seven seven nine.
Second.
To be, motion we have a minute, we have a second. Any discussion on the amendment?
Uh, just briefly. I had an opportunity to read to it. It's really well-written. It is a statement of conditions that are applied to the transference of the license. And from what I see, it is really, really well-written and well-researched, and I'm happy to support it.
Thank you, Councilman.
It's been approved by the applicant, her attorneys, and the community members who surround the facility.
Did, Councilman, did the, did our Office of Nighttime Economy assist in this?
That's why it's so well-written.
Okay, yeah, it sounded like it was Allison.
That's why it's so well-written. Yeah, they absolutely led, led this process.
That's great. Thanks, Councilman.
Thank you. They actually, you know, he learned the lessons they had learned in other places and applied it to this situation.
Yeah, I wish we had this freedom to apply to any number of different liquor licenses. But this is, this is really well-done. I commend you and the Department of Nighttime Economy for this. Thanks.
Let me record that. No, it wasn't recorded. That's just, thank you. Thank you. Is that it?
Madam President.
Yes, Councilwoman Gross.
I was just wondering if we, last week and Wednesday, we were expecting some analysis of whether the state PLCB is, how they're still handling these attachments. And I'm curious to know if we've gotten any feedback.
I don't, I don't have any feedback. Did anyone else receive feedback?
I just remember there might have been some change. Since my district has done so many, I was wondering if there'd been some change because that would concern me so that we would know what to anticipate. But I can follow up with the council members. It's a lot of department offline. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Any other members? Seeing none, the bills are not ready for final action. All in favor of the passage will vote aye when the name is called. Those opposed will vote no. The clerk, please call the roll.
Reverend Burgess?
Aye.
Mr. Coghill?
Aye.
Ms. Gross?
Aye.
Mr. Kraus?
Aye.
Mr. Lavelle?
Aye.
Mr. O'Connor? Mrs. Strasburger?
Aye.
Mr. Wilson?
Aye.
Mrs. Kell Smith, President?
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero noes.
Thank you. The bills haven't received the legally required number of votes has finally passed. And that moves us on to motions and resolutions. So we have meeting announcements. Council will meet tomorrow morning, Wednesday, January thirteenth, for the standing committee meetings chaired by Councilman Lavelle at ten AM. Also, tomorrow afternoon at two PM, council will hold a global cast public hearing on Bills nine four three and nine four four as they relate to the historic designation of the VA facility, chapel, and laboratory buildings. Councilman Burgess, is that in your district?
Which, which, I'm sorry, which one?
The VA facility, chapel, and laboratory buildings?
I don't know. I'm sorry. I don't, I don't know. I don't know which building you're referring to. I have to look at it.
So I just want to know if it's, who's chairing the meeting, if I need to chair them. So I'll talk to members later. To register to speak for tomorrow's council meeting, please fill out and sign, please fill out the signup form in, in its entirety on the council meeting webpage by nine AM Wednesday mornings and by noon Wednesday for the public hearing. So by, by nine AM, you have to fill it out for the regular meeting by, by noon for the public hearing. You may also register by calling the city council at four one two, two five five, two one, three eight by registration deadlines. Is there anything from the members?
Yeah, Madam President, may I?
Yes, Councilman Kraus.
So if you'll indulge me here, I'm kind of flying by the seat of my pants, but I just found this and read this in the Washington Post. They're reporting this as of just really a few minutes ago. President-elect Joe Biden announced Tuesday that he will nominate Pennsylvania's top health official, Rachel Levine, to be his Assistant Secretary of Health. Levine is a pediatrician who would become the first openly transgendered federal official to be confirmed by the US Senate. And President-elect Biden says Dr. Levine will bring the steady leadership and essential expertise we need to get people through this pandemic, no matter their zip code, race, religion, orientation, identity, or disability, and meet the public health needs of our country in this critical moment and beyond. She is an historic and deeply qualified choice to lead our administration health efforts. So that's a pretty amazing moment in American history to see that, uh, that President-elect Biden has the, the Constitution to, to put forward such a qualified candidate at such a difficult time when we need, you know, the, the consummate professionals to be in, in positions of leadership. So I'm just, I'm terribly proud at this moment in time of, of our country and of President-elect Biden and of Dr. Levine. So thank you for letting me share that.
Thank you. Thank you for sharing that. And congratulations to Dr. Levine and to Pennsylvania. Any other members? Seeing none, we can, we have a motion to excuse the absent members, approve the minutes and adjourn the meeting.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Meeting adjourned. Thank you, everyone. Be safe.